I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from the July 9 and July 10 to 13 meetings.
Make a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion, Carroll, second, Scott, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Warrants, July 12th and July 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve of those warrants.
Motion, Scott.
I'll second.
Second, Corey, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries.
So that was for the warrants?
Yeah.
I see one of my pack in this half this week.
Thank you.
Save a treat. Hold on until these. Thanks.
Year-to-date financial review.
Yeah, we can go through them. I think we're all, we're sitting pretty well here. Pretty well, we're a little over on the...
Let's look at the revenue side first. Administration, basically, not in bad shape because... The contracted services is going to make up a big chunk of that. Let's see how it goes. Office of Planning and Development. Steve, it seems like that's getting slow to roll this year, you think?
I think we're doing as well for plumbing and building permits.
Yeah.
Newback, this past year, that just sold, we do have potentially three new houses. We have trouble finding help with that.
Mm-hmm.
They have been slower to pick up.
Yeah.
That's what we're having.
It is what it is.
It does happen.
Yeah. But as far as on the permit sides, it looks like it's pretty much where it needs to be then.
We will need that, as I said, on the permit side, on the plumbing side, although obviously if the destruction is over, plumbing permits will be sold as well.
Right.
But I think we'll hit that one, but the Newback inspection is not trending well.
Okay.
I have my revenue page sorted. You going?
No. Police, that's it right there.
Front page, sorry.
Police revenue.
So yeah, we're, some of the outstanding revenue that we're still anticipating are our COPS grant for the final payments for the remainder of the year, that's on track. Our ambulance service, the second half payment, which is after the, in the next six months, so that's on track, that'll zero out. Officers at functions got some grant, our grants, our seatbelt and our home line security and stuff, that's still outstanding, but that's, I mean, we're well on track with that. We're above our halfway mark. And hunting and fishing license, once again, we're just halfway there. So we're good there.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Rick and Parks.
RV Park is low, but we've got some functions, well, from this past weekend, it was totally low.
Mm-hmm.
But the beginning of the season has been real slow on RV rentals. I mean, for several weeks, there's been nobody there. We had a function here this weekend, the Pow Wow, and then we've got Bike Main coming up, so that'll generate some money there.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, they're behind there, but still, we've got the whole month of August and...
Right.
Which is, August is usually a pretty busy month.
Yeah. And in basically July too, July postings are not really in there, so...
Right, that's right, July's not in there.
This is...
We've had more people here in July than we've had the rest of the season, so...
We'll see.
Fall programs, of course, that's stuff that only starts on...
Doesn't look too bad, summer programs look...
Summer programs look good, we have a lot of kids that were here, so we're on track there.
Good. Revenue sharing seems to be pretty much trending similar to last year's numbers. More or less not a whole lot of difference there.
No. All within a thousand dollars of each other, a thousand to a thousand dollars, yeah?
Excise summary, excise tax, excise taxes up a little bit. Vehicle prices go up, excise taxes go up.
Right. We sell three seventy thousand dollar vehicles in a day. Those are going to get registered.
Mm.
You're right with that. Yeah, we're up twenty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Reserve accounts all...
Reserve accounts, there's not anything too much exciting going on in any of that.
Nope.
Going forward to the departments.
Everything is within, I mean, overall, we're two percent, which still, if we catch up from our winter expenditures with Tony. Everybody else is all within, within or lower forty-six percent. Fire or police, we're at forty-eight, so pretty, pretty on track there. Again, our roads are still a little high, but again, we're catching up.
Well, there's a part of that too, we've got a lot of summer work going on.
Some work going on, and then expect about salt.
Salt, yeah.
You know, decent end of the winter too, the Pow Wow and the...
Yeah.
Navy, so...
Right.
Should be okay.
Mm-hmm. So...
Everything else is, everything else is below, everything else is on track.
Yeah.
On track, within reason.
Administration's going to be, going to be an issue. Not totally unexpected, because we're, you know, we've got basically expenses for the town manager. Recruitment is, that's where that comes from. So the advertising and that stuff is showing up there. I mean, there's... So, as we have discussed earlier, depending on how things roll out with the town manager hiring, it is likely that we are going to need to have a special town meeting to appropriate additional funds that cover the shortfall. Because we cannot spend more in administration than what has been authorized in March.
Well, I'll show you what we came up with as far as the projected salary and what was budgeted for, for the town manager's position, which we were able to get some of those things in there. So depending on what the final numbers are on negotiations for salary, the benefits are already budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll go over, I've got a worksheet there that I'll go over that in executive session. So I just know, I don't think we're going to be that bad, not as bad as, well, may have been anticipated.
Okay.
I think we'll be, we'll be all set.
Unless there are other questions? Or can development corp appointments?
Do you have that?
Nope.
I have nothing.
Okay, so every year, there needs to be, I don't know why we don't have that here, so... The chairman usually becomes the, you were for a number of years. The council chair was, and the counselors were basically the members of the board.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know why that's not here, but it's on here. We'll come back to that, and I'll go check where that sign off was.
Okay.
If we could, please.
Yeah. Streetlight update, Steve?
Yeah, I passed around a report or a update on the meeting I can't even on July 12th. As you can see, it's not turned out the way what we thought it was going to happen. I think one of the things that initially happened was, they didn't even have forked in as taking part. And we were one of the ones that had some funding that was appropriated. And one of the things that happened, I believe, is when Austin West carried, he was the one who inspired this, and when he left, I think, along, fell through the cracks. Now, Mark Puckett, City Attorney of Scottsdale, had taken it over and did the on washburn. He was the one who called the meeting. None of the municipalities are really happy with what's happened. Everyone's had, had a streetlight assessment, we haven't. We have a signed contract now, in the next week or two. Paul, Matt Vessel from Real Term will contact me, we'll have an audit there. One of the things that municipalities thought was going to happen is the audit would not only give us an inventory of our lights, but they would also do an assessment as to where we need lights and where maybe we don't need lights. For example, if you look at Route 11, we have streetlights going for a half a mile. Do we need those? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe at the Tethnot Road, and maybe at the intersection that Parents Circle. Other than that, going up the hill as well, there's really a street light there. I think it was an empty assumption that that would be part of the assessment, and it hasn't been. So when I meet with Paul Vessel here, I'll make, I'm kind of glad I have a warrant. We didn't have it yet, so maybe we can get some of these things done. We also have to apparently do our own negotiations with the American League. So there's a lot of unknown, because of the generosity of my department, they had funding for this, and one of the few municipalities that do. Now, there's a maintenance issue that's come up. There was never a part of the agreement, there was a price for the assessment, and it was a price for the light. For example, for us, it's about ninety thousand dollars. But now, Mark Puckett tells us that there's going to be a maintenance fee. But I have a feeling that a lot of municipalities have to do leasing. Well, if Real Term or Emira sold their own lights, yeah, there'd be a maintenance fee. But in our situation, I believe we're buying lights. So I don't think we'd have that maintenance fee, but that's something I have to figure out when they come. But anyway, we are, we are in the loop now, we are going to be involved. It's just not going to happen this year for sure.
Mm-hmm.
And one thing we'd like to do is, all the municipalities are kind of in a different level, where we should all be in the same level, I have no clue, because the savings was recognized as a group of fifteen municipalities taking part in it. So I think, for some reason, we don't have the assessment, but moving forward, I don't think, like, for example, Easton should be getting their lights installed, if we haven't even had an assessment yet, or Frenchville, or, that's what I mean. So I'll keep on top of it, and the outcome of this meeting is, we're having a group meeting along with Real Term again, and then right after that, we'll have a meeting with Emira, so that we can all be on the same page. And if Emira is promoting a thirty percent savings, if we would renew with them, but they're going to put the same old solarian lights back.
Yeah.
We want the LED lights, which is, in time, that's where the saving comes from. And Emira won't do it. So I still think we're, we're okay with Real Term, but we just have to patch out some new heads.
So just to clarify things in my head, Real Term is the name of the organization that's looking to put this together and coordinate the audits and move this project forward?
Yes.
Okay. And if we are buying the lights and they're being put up, will we then be responsible for the maintenance of those lights?
Yeah, we would be, but we wouldn't have the deal through them. We could hire, let's say, any electrician that's certified by the Department of Labor, one of our choose, not have to pay a maintenance fee to them, which they would just get Emira to do.
Yeah.
So that's why we, none of the municipalities, and I think the municipalities that are leasing are not going to see much of the savings for a while, and that's going to be dragged on for quite a while. And I think they thought that with this forty to sixty percent savings, this was going to be their godsend for the budget next year. Or there's going to be a big surprise coming, and I think we'd be in good shape because we have, we have the funding of lights. It's just that we were kind of left out of the loop, or so it seemed. We're back on track now, and I'll report back when I meet with them, and when we meet at the municipality as approved.
Okay. So some municipalities are changing their lighting, but rather than buying the lights, they're leasing the lights through Real, through Real Term.
See, right now, we're doing two hundred and thirty-seven lights, all the above lights, off the street lights and down.
Mm-hmm.
For Prescott, I'd be looking at six hundred lights, you're looking at...
Three hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
We don't have like coins, or we have to lease it, but I'm going to carry it with me.
Yeah.
Or Fairfield, so most, I don't know of any other municipality at that meeting besides us that had funding of light. So that's why they had, they stuck with the maintenance fee, and they would not see savings for...
Several years?
Yeah.
For a while, but not, not as quickly as if they can buy it up quick.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll...
Keep adding.
Keep you posted.
But probably isn't going to happen this year.
No, I know it's not going to happen, because we got fourteen, fifteen municipalities, and there's not one that says that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Questions on that to Steve? That's... Thank you.
Yeah.
Train vessel update, is that also on your plate?
Yeah. We did the train vessel earlier this spring, we are wishing it up, yeah, Recreation Trails program ran. In order to get reimbursed about, we have to inspect it. And one of the requirements is to have a sign recognizing them for their net money. At the same time, we put up a couple of other logos on there too, so dug back from the trail program pain. People fall off, and they look good, we're approved, so I would assume you would, that's a prepaid grant.
Mm-hmm.
I would assume we'll get reimbursed or something. And as you said, the project will vary.
No issues, good, good. And moving right on to parking lot?
The parking lot is basically done, except the lights, because they haven't been in yet. It looks like through the vendor, or we've knocked out, we're buying from the company, and their metal vendor is what's stolen it all. So we should have received them by now. So it looks like the order date will be, or the shipping date will be in August. JBBC will sell it. Really, the only issue we're having is people driving over our rest. And I don't know, it just escapes me as to why.
Welcome to my world.
So we have secured some curbing. The reason why we didn't put curbing permanently is because in the wintertime, it would raise heck with the works. So we put up, Tony will be putting some temporary curbing. In the wintertime, we just push them up on the grass and put it there. But it's not going to stop people from driving up ahead from either the one side or the other. So I hate to suggest putting up a pair or there like a chain, because either it's going to have to be on their rooftop, or on our loop, or on our grass, or it's going to be in the way of mowing. And we'll put up the curbing.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll see what happens. Hopefully, that'll discourage a few trucking through. The funding for that is, we first, that was part of the downtown renovation grant, two hundred thousand. With everything all told, and we were even able to secure a little bit of that to help with our lighting repair. It looks like we'll be on track to have about a hundred thousand left for the lighting, maybe a little bit more than that, at least a hundred. We are scheduling a bidding signing for next Wednesday.
What times?
At twelve-thirty. Chamber of Commerce numbers on federal coordination. So that's important for the parking lot.
Okay, good.
Came out of the place.
Yeah.
Yes, it looks like so.
Nice access.
Yeah, as soon as the barriers stay down.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm waiting for crosswalk signs to...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that too looks real like.
Yeah. Well, there's a bigger walk down here, which would be along with the crosswalk at the end of the bridge as well. Yeah, that was part of the, part of the project. We also have, no one had a note.
Yes.
We'll move on to the levy extension bid review slash award. That was on your table for review. There are four bids submitted, outlined on the paper. Here.
That one of the sheets I handed up.
Yeah.
It wasn't in your weekend package.
Right. So the bids range from a low of four forty-nine, one fifteen, to a high of five ninety-two, seven hundred, with two other bids basically in the middle of those two outliers.
More information? I'd like to make a motion to go with JBBC Incorporated with their lowest bid of four forty-nine, one fifteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Scott, second by Carroll, further discussion?
What's that dollar though?
Four forty-nine.
Yeah, but is that four hundred forty-nine, four thousand forty-nine?
Four hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred fifteen. Yeah. And...
I think I have in the spreadsheet as to where we stand with our funding. I know we include it.
Yeah.
So in, in that, the expenditures already recognized, I put in some projected expenses that I assume is going to happen. I even threw in twenty-five thousand for conveniences, because that's all that would be in there. And even with that, if you look at the balance at the bottom...
We're still solid.
It looks like we're in good shape, so if we have any surprises, that's there, and maybe we'll have a little bit more to do, another project or two. That was initially part of the downtown renovation project, they should have cut out and then they rolled it back from the money, or maybe we'll be able to do it sometime.
Okay.
That project should have started on August sixth, fifth, sixth, but we're still waiting for the owners to receive the PMA. And they were informing today that they'll get everything ready, and so that, that week, we should start moving the trees, and Jim is getting his stuff ready. So that was awesome.
Okay. So, any other questions or discussion about that levy extension?
Yeah, it looks like it's in pretty good shape.
It's three and a half years, maybe we'll get it for...
Yeah, it's not done yet. It's one step at a time. Hearing, no further discussion or questions, all in favor of the bid award. Motion carries. Jim Bouchard for four hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars. Tom, you want to go back to forked in development, or are we going to push that to the next meeting?
No. We just need to determine, normally in the past, the chair has been the chair for that corporation. I just need an okay from you folks tomorrow, so that Angela can file it. You were in the past, well, then, Marky was the chair. She basically needs to file it online. She gave me a paper, I thought it was in here, but it's not. It's just basically a list of the counselors with their signatures, and just need the okay to move forward with that as the chair of that. If you look at our, just our past development corps, we need to assign a treasurer and a chairman. Angela's been the clerk, and then everybody else has been members of the council. So we just need the okay to be able to move forward with that, and Angela can file it.
Okay, so we need a motion, we need a motion to appoint the chair of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint the chair of the council as the chair of the development corp, right?
No, I'll make a motion to approve and accept Dr. Bouchard as the chair.
Scott makes a motion, Carroll seconds, further discussion? I don't think I've ever had a meeting with that.
No, I don't really, that's why...
This is something that's basically kept in our back pocket as something that we might be able to use for, for future projects. Like, sometimes you need to have that organization, and that's why it's...
Housing development or something like that.
It goes back to when they built the apartments that got flooded out, where the RV park is. It goes back to that.
To that corporation.
That's what that did. And then, once it was formed, if it was needed again, it's just as easy to keep it rolling. And that's all that is, so...
Yeah, I suspect there is a treasurer that's needed as well, it was done. That's something I think we can hold off, as long as Angela can put that forward and file it as a corporation online, is what they're requesting, and that update, so...
There are members on that that are in the, in the community, right?
Nope.
It's, it's just counselors?
Counselors, yeah.
Okay, you're right.
Counselors and the manager.
Okay.
If, I'll, I'll get with Angela tomorrow, I, again, I apologize, I... I, I saw that sign-off sheet and I thought it was included. And that's my fault, I guess. But Angela just was in correspondence with Cindy and she said, no, all she needed was that we bring it to the meeting and that we okay it and replace the chair. The treasurer. I guess we'll have to determine who's going to treasure, is going to be in the, in the future. And we can do that in the future as well.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Uh, should we appoint a treasurer? Because I think we probably for filing, we're going to need to have a treasurer.
If he's not with Tom Matt or whoever the chief of police, that's.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think, I think we could. We could add that to your.
Why not?
Another hat.
Why not? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve and accept, uh, Mr. Tom Pelletier as the treasurer.
Wouldn't. Will you build the others next minute?
Is there a second to the motion? Second, Carol? Uh, further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Wait a minute, I gotta text my wife.
Yeah. You have to ask her?
I gotta tell my wife.
Okay.
I'm the treasurer of the fucking development corporation.
Wow, don't worry about it. Put it on your resume.
Okay, it's good. Build it.
We've never had a meeting as far as I know.
Yeah, okay, that's even better.
So, it's a good thing to belong to. Doesn't really take a lot.
Okay.
Alright, furnace update?
Furnace update. Okay, if we remember, and I wasn't a part of that then, but if you guys can kind of jog our memory here. I had the contract and Don came back to you guys and said that he, there were, we had gone beyond a time where there were certain, uh, bonuses that were going to be available when they initially signed, uh, put the bids in. And that we had gone beyond the time for, to receive that full amount of the bonus. Um, although, when I was going through our bill, they, they invoiced us for the furnace this week. And they didn't include that bonus. So I went back and found the contract. And it was twenty-eight hundred dollars, actually it was thirty-two hundred dollars, uh, with a five hundred dollar incentive. And they hadn't included that in our invoice. So our invoice was, uh, basically eighteen thousand some dollars. Eighteen thousand, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. I found our contract and brought the guy from Dead River in, uh, and found that Don had signed that contract prior to the deadline of those incentives expiring.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so he, it was, it was twenty-eight hundred bucks, not five hundred. So he went back today, um, and checked. And sure enough, the contract was the contract. The con, the, the twenty-eight hundred dollars incentive expired on, uh, twelve thirty-one seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
And I found that Don signed it on twelve fourteen seventeen. And held his kind of feet to the fire to say, that's what we signed when we signed it. He had come back after that. And I remember being at one of the meetings where those incentives had gone away. But, the contract's the contract.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, he called me today and said, we'll honor that twenty-eight hundred bucks. Uh, actually thirty-two hundred bucks plus the five hundred, he did give us a five hundred. But, not the twenty-eight hundred.
Okay.
So, I don't know if it's going to be in the form of a rebate from the furnace company. Or if they're going to get the rebate from the furnace company. At the end of the day, it's, it's the same amount of beans.
Right.
So, uh, we reduced our, our invoice number by twenty-eight hundred bucks. Although, the council had approved some added, uh, expenditures for the abatement, the asbestos abatement.
Right, yeah, we weren't sure.
Now we have a number. Uh, and that asbestos abatement was twenty-five hundred bucks. And then we had some landscaping, uh, in, in the placement of the, um.
The tanks?
The tank.
Mm-hmm.
And then we had another expenditure there. It came up to thirty-two hundred dollars. So, that's what we need to ask for in addition to, so it puts us well. Well, within our, uh, our means, it was, well, another three thousand dollars less than what we had originally planned. So, we're, uh, let me look for the right one here. On the invoice, Paul must have taken it back. So, we're, we're good with that. So, we need, uh, we need to just appropriate that thirty-two hundred dollars for, uh, the landscaping and the, uh, county abatement, uh, asbestos removal. And.
I thought we had already appropriated the money.
Yeah, we didn't have, uh, we didn't have a, a number. We had agreed to.
Yeah, we had a number.
We did have a number?
We had a number.
What's that?
Yeah, it was to exceed.
Yeah.
Not to exceed?
We had a cap.
Yeah, no, we had a number.
Okay, so we're, we're well within that number.
Yeah.
Because of this incentive coming back down to twenty-eight hundred bucks.
Yeah.
So.
It's because I think we had already appropriated to pay that abatement amount, if I recall.
We did.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, Paula told me that we didn't have a number. So, now that we had the number of twenty-five, it was, I don't know what it was not to exceed, but, uh, whatever it was. If we've already appropriated, then we're, then we're good.
Yeah. I believe we are.
So, that's that. The other issue with the furnace was, um, Russ, uh, approached me with a three-year contract that was supposed to come with the furnace initially at a dollar ninety-nine a gallon. And he would lock that in for three years. Uh, he made an offer that he would, if we locked in for that three years, that he would come down to, uh, dollar, or dollar sixty-one, which was what Thursday's price was. The problem with putting this up to bid is, it's, well, it's not a problem, it's just, it's part of the process. This is not our tank. This is Dead River's tank. So right now, it's got a thousand gallons in it. Um, he gave me some numbers as to what the price was if we locked in. Um, and it was considerably less than the, uh, one ninety-nine. And he said he wouldn't hold us to the contract of the one ninety-nine. But when I found out this other thing about the twenty-eight hundred, he said there was no contract to the one ninety-nine. So, the price is, um, one sixty-four for a three-year contracted price. One fifty-seven for, um, a one-year contracted price. Or the price of the day is one fifty-seven point nine, market price. I kind of assumed that we would, somebody here would ask if we were going to go out for bid. So I threw out some inquiries per, uh, Degal Oil. And, uh, they come in at the market price today at one forty-five. So, I think it's something that we need to think about. Um, I know that we have not contracted in the past. We've just gone with the market price. Uh, there's an anticipation of the price going up considerably. We're also able to increase our volume because Mark's, Mark's got propane at his, propane heat at, at his facility. We've got propane at like our towers. So, obviously with the, um, the more volume that you have, the better price that they can, they can give. So, estimated, um, thirty-three to thirty-four hundred gallons next year. So I just wanted to throw those prices at you, um, and kind of make a decision on, not necessarily tonight, but if we're going to contract, or if we're just going to stick with the market price. And if we need to compare one company or competitors, then we need to understand that that's not our tank. And when we do change, uh, they don't need to.
Change the tank.
Change a tank as well. So right now, our tank's full. And I've explained to Russell that, you know, it is what it is. If there's, uh, a great margin between their price and the competitor's price, it may be something that we're looking to do.
So if, excuse me. If, if we go with another company, we'd have to change their tank.
They have to change their tank.
And what would the cost be associated with that? Is there a price tag on?
Uh, they sell you the propane.
Okay.
Not the tank.
The tank, it's their tank. It's their tank.
Always no cost associated with swapping.
Yeah, swapping.
As far as I know, they don't.
My thinking is.
I, I think, uh, right now, we have a full tank.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to need, um, propane for a couple more months, I hope. Uh, if we decide to, you know, contract, keep an eye on the price and try to contract with somebody if it, if it switches to the competitor. Competitor told me today that it's not uncommon that they do that. I don't know if they do it with this big a tank all the time, but he says it's not uncommon. So, something that, that we need to consider, uh.
Why would the market price be that different with two of them? It's got to be volume.
Well, it's the same volume for both.
Well, but their. It's how much volume their movie, how much propane their movie.
Oh, five thousand. I'm sorry, yeah.
Probably lose a little more volume so we can operate.
Yeah, yeah, so there's. One forty-five versus one fifty-seven of the market prices. There's twelve cents a gallon.
Yeah.
Are, is the oil tanks still in the basement, or is that going to?
Oil tanks are gone. One of the things that, uh, Russell of Dead River reminded me was, they actually, they needed to remove the oil tanks from the basement. That was part of their contract. But, we had just filled the oil tanks in, in April, May, so they were still somewhat full. There's two, three hundred and thirty gallon tanks. And I want to say they were three quarters, eighty, eighty-five percent full. He did give us the market price of the oil on the day they removed, they pumped the oil out, uh, which was substantially more than what, uh, we had paid for the oil back in April. So, I don't think, we, we didn't lose anything on this particular.
Right.
Exchange, but I think it, it's something that we need to look at in the future. If there's going to be that big of a, a difference in disparity in, in prices, then maybe we need to, uh.
So do we entertain putting it up for bid?
I, I don't think you necessarily need to put up a bid, but if you look at the, the market prices being that different.
Right.
I think, uh, somebody needs to pay attention to that. And possibly, if it's low enough and it's predicted that it isn't going to get any lower, then maybe bid it for a year.
Right.
Get the locked-in price for a year.
Is the other company willing to do that on, on?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, uh, Russell asked me today if, if was you guys are going to make a decision tonight. And I told him, I think we're just going to back the idea around. I just wanted to inform you guys where we were with that. And that if there's going to be that much disparity between competitors, then it's something I think that needs to be taken care of. Take, taking, you know, somebody needs to keep an eye on it.
I mean, what are the odds that if we wait a little, you know, if we wait some time, that, then the market price goes up from the one forty-five?
It will.
It will.
As you get into the heating season, it's going to be, it's going to be just like any other heating fuel commodity. It's going to go up.
Right.
It's probably as low as it is right now for the year.
Yeah.
But.
So, we can, I mean, we can reach out and, and get a contract price from the other competitor, or put it to bid to both of them officially. And we need to use our propane in there. And then upon using the whole amount of propane, then we'll make our switch then, but.
How much, oh, I mean, you say there's a thousand gallons there. We're thinking we're going to burn, what, twenty-five hundred gallons here, or what?
About thirty-five hundred gallons.
About thirty-five hundred just here.
Yes.
Then we have the other sites.
I don't know what Mark, yeah.
Mark and the towers and stuff.
I will say this, that Mark paid almost a dollar more than that last year, a gallon.
Yeah.
So, volume makes a big difference in the pricing incentive.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's something that, that we need to take a look at, and I can.
Let's put it together and see what kind of volume we, we use, you know, with all the sites. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to go for, for a bid, we might as well.
Oh, no, and, and exactly. And I talked to Mark about that this morning. He told him that, you know, you're going to get a better price this year on your propane because you're going to be included in the volume incentive that we're going to receive here.
Yeah.
So that thirty-five hundred, it wa, I think we had twenty-five hundred gallons last year of, uh, heating oil. And propane, uh, as a rule, they say is forty percent, thirty-five to forty percent more in, in gallonage.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
The efficiency is supposed to be higher, but you earn more of it. And that's why it's, uh, it's, it's less money as well, so.
Yeah, let's, let's put it together, put some numbers together as to what, what we would need and, yeah, it probably makes sense to go, go for at least an annual bid. South Pearlitt Brook Road Farm Road.
Okay, you know where that road is?
I think so.
Yeah. So Tony kind of brought it to my attention this week, that, uh, that is a, a constant problem, and you can probably attest to that, for that, uh, I think the, the rocks and the silt and the mud comes from almost a mile up on top of the hill.
Is that right above his?
Yeah.
Yeah, that driveway right above.
Yeah.
His ditch.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, one of the things that Tony's reached out to Soil Conservation, and I've reached out to the roads guy from the state of Maine, to determine whose responsibility is that, I mean, uh, in, in, in the long term, when that runs down and into our road, which we have to maintain. Tony spends a couple hundred bucks on that every time it runs down from the top of the hill and creates a hazard, a public safety issue.
Right.
In the roadway, especially at night, on a day like today, or, you know, eight, ten inches of mud and rocks and silt, uh, build up on the side of the road. So it's, it's, it's a safety concern. And the owner is not necessarily the user of that property. There's a farmer up there that uses the.
The farmland is rented, so, yes. And, uh, so that makes it a little bit, little bit different. If, I think, if the farmer was the owner, then they would be more inclined to, to make it so that it works.
Right.
Better, because it isn't very cute right now for them, uh, even to go up there with a tractor is, is treacherous.
I, well, my, my, my.
Yeah. No, I mean.
It's treacherous, you're right. It is for a long ways up there.
Yeah.
I talked to Soil Conservation. This is going to be the fourth or the fifth time I've talked to them. They say, usually we wait till the farmer calls us and says he's got a problem. But in this case, it doesn't happen because it's not the farmer's life.
Right.
We rent it. So it never happens, and again, I didn't go see him the last time, but the time before that, went there, showed him everything, and so that. I think they're hang their tide, they. I think they're hang their tide, they.
Does it have to be the farmer, or?
The landowner.
How about the landlord?
The landowner.
The landowner, basically. So if we can, and I, I guess I'd be willing, I'd go talk with her. And if she generates the complaint, they would be more apt to follow through with it?
That's what he says.
Okay.
And he said, if we get this project now, by the time we plan it out, get it all lined up. I think it'll be next year before it thinks that.
Oh, definitely.
There's a landlord, but with the farmers, sign is growing it every year. All the divertments and all the water bars are on the wall.
They fill them up?
Right down the road.
Yeah, yeah, the road's a ditch.
I think it's changed part of it years because of the farm.
Yeah. Um, I mean, they, the, even if, even if Soil Conservation gets involved. And makes a new plan of what to do there. There's money out of someone's pocket, the landowner.
Yeah.
I mean, there may be some cost sharing, but, you know, they're not gonna pay for all of that themselves.
Okay, so my, my question to, uh, Coughlin.
Peter?
Peter Coughlin. He's the main roads guy. They, they provide assistance to towns and municipalities and, and to determine certain liabilities. And so my, my question to him is, if this becomes a public safety hazard. Because it's continuing without any input from the landowner. Uh, is that a neglect on our part? Because we haven't cleared the road? Or is, is it a landowner's responsibility or liability?
Like blowing snow on the road?
It's like blowing snow on the road, but that's, that's an intentional act. And, and this on, this on the other hand, is not intentional, but it's, it's, it's neglect.
But, I mean, you, you, you can't direct your water on your land. To another landowner's property.
That's right.
That's a law.
So even if there were runoffs put off on that road.
This, the road.
Would be done on the same land.
The road is our property. That water is coming on our road. So, I mean, there is sort of like a problem there that, within the legal structure of, of things. I mean, how do you get people to do stuff is another part. The other issue that we talked about with Tony and I is, you know, that is any TV trail, a snowmobile trail, you know?
Exactly.
You get, you don't wanna get the landowner all.
Quitely to the point where, um, yeah, we need to work with them to do that. So because it became an issue this week, because, as you know, it washed out in the road last week?
Last week.
Last week, and then a month ago. And for me, it's, it's, it's more safety thing.
Right.
Cause this last time, it happened at ten o'clock at night. I found out already at seven o'clock in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody could have been.
What did you do today with the bell?
Um, it, it wasn't bad today. Uh, like, it didn't.
But it, it will, it will progressively get worse because.
Well, we just reditched it there, I mean.
Well, that, and, and the bottom of that, uh, of that road is down to big rocks.
Mm.
But if you go to the top of the hill, the silt has started up again. So it'll take a couple more times for that silt to reach the bottom part to make it to the road.
Yeah.
So it's probably at, at least something that we need to address, uh.
Yeah, I mean.
Before, you know, the rain continues for the summer, so.
All right, if we have something, I mean, if we have another heavy rain, uh, event, there, there'll be more stuff in the road guaranteed. I mean, like I said, right now, the ditch has been redug. So that does act a little bit as a reservoir to sort of collect some of that stuff. But, I mean, it had been dug a month before it filled last time. Because, you know, so.
So it's something that Tony and I, Tony thought it was important enough to bring to your attention that we. It, because it, it is a, a safety issue, a public safety issue, that.
Yeah.
Something that we need to move forward and work on.
You know, the other part about it is, is people don't do things unless money talks. I mean, basically, money usually makes people do things one way or another. And at some point in time, if nothing happens. Is, is it, is it something that the town can go back to the landowner and say, hey?
That's my question to, to Coughlin.
We've, we've got this, we've got this ongoing problem that you don't address. It costs us X amount of dollars, you know, we're gonna send you a bill. You know, uh, that, that's probably a big push, but I think, you know.
And once again, that property is a snowmobile trail and an ATV trail. And I think we may need to work with everybody involved in.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, at one time, the way that that was designed, there is, there is a waterway that is in between the two properties. Between that property and Le Cario Farm. And, I mean, there's, they had put concrete and stuff, and there's a big cross culvert right, right above there. There's probably no water that ever comes out of that culvert, because.
Not from?
Not from, no, no.
You can almost tell where it was designed to turn.
Yeah.
And how that's all filled in.
It's filled in.
It doesn't, doesn't really.
No.
It's filled in, so is it our responsibility to go up there and clean it?
Well, no, it's not our land.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
You weigh your costs though, right?
Mm-hmm.
The landowner gives you permission, and if it's dependent on the cost, dependent on maintenance, you go.
I still think that the liability issue, I don't, I think the, the people of the town will work on.
Yeah.
And we're. I'm sure they can find us some contact.
We're, we're well beyond the point of, it's not something that started this year.
No, 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 this has been ongoing.
Since I've been here once, two, three times a year ago.
It's been like that for.
So I, I guess, uh, I guess my suggestion would be, we can probably start talks with the landowner. And see where that brings. And I, I guess, I can start, and we'll see where that goes from there.
Cause right now, you know, I, I don't think the town would be liable if something would happen. Let's say something would happen between seven and nine to nine o'clock. Cause if we don't know about it, we can't, you know, can't face it.
Right.
But if somebody were to call at midnight, they, they got twenty-four hours to correct the fault. But that's minor compared to somebody hitting it to that.
Come on.
On a motorcycle.
Motorcycle, that's very dangerous there, I mean. And it, I know, I wasn't here when it washed the last time, but I know, I heard that, I mean, there was.
Oh, yeah.
Rocks, rocks this big in the road. I mean, even, even a small car has issues running through a, a field of rocks like that.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna.
So we wanted to bring that to your attention to let you know that that was an issue that we're trying to resolve here. And just, uh, hopefully it's not a liability issue on our part. We get a, a call back from, uh, Coughlin. We'll see where we go from there.
Yeah. In the meantime, I don't think it's a bad thing. I mentioned to Tony the other day of us to sort of keep an eye, keep, keep a tab of what the costs are related to this.
Right.
At some point in time.
Tony's, Tony's got that figured out.
We pull that out and say, listen, we spent this much money doing this, this, this summer. I mean.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's above and beyond, I mean, you know, there are little problems everywhere, so you don't gotta get into this, but.
So.
Okay.
We'll start discussions with, uh, I'll try to contact her in the next day or so. Can you do that?
Moving on, tax, tax rate. So, everybody's favorite job. So we have different scenarios stapled together that was on the table. Um, and different rates and what, what they're anticipated to generate.
Think we have to determine what, what it is that we want as an overlay. And, or what it is we need as an overlay.
Yeah.
And, um.
So that gets us to this other.
Yes.
worksheet here.
There's little lines on there, just my notes to remind me of what they are.
Okay.
So as far as, um, anticipated expenditures on the town manager's salary. Uh, and benefits. We have, um, budgeted in the administrative, um, departments, administration department's budget. If you look at the single plan, uh, PPO, we have budgeted on six months. Which is the five thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Of, um, the single plan. Insurance policy, which is what, I believe, two years ago.
Yeah, new employees is a single, single, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
That's been budgeted for. Go down to. Basically, the next line. There's three months, and then we have budgeted for six months.
Mm-hmm.
So the first line down there on the left is what the anticipated expenditures are going to be. Number one, the salary, uh, is based on what our past town manager's salary was.
Mm-hmm.
At the hourly rate, it's six hundred and forty hours, um, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
That's at Dawn's, um, that was at Dawn's rate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so. The, the next line down is the medical insurance. And then, next line down is what three months of that, um, expenditure would be. Cause it, let's say theoretically, we started September one. Then that would be four months, but there's a thirty-day wait period. To get onto the plan.
Mm-hmm.
So if we theoretically had somebody hired by September one, their plan would only start, we would only have to start paying in October.
Right.
So that's a three-month total right there. The life insurance, a short-term disability, it's a hundred and fifty-six dollars, uh, for, uh, four months. And we have budgeted two hundred and forty for six months.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, deferred comp, um, if the plan is for four months, thirty-five dollars a week, which is what. The other employees are at, which is what was decided. So for four months, that's five hundred and sixty dollars, and we had budgeted nine hundred and ten for six months.
Mm-hmm.
The total amount minus the FICAN Medicare, um, is twenty-seven thousand, thirty with the FICAN Medicare. Our total unbudgeted price of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three, ninety-five. Is, is what the new position would require.
Mm-hmm.
Go over to the six-month, uh, budgeted, we have budgeted sixty-seven hundred dollars. So the final not budgeted, unbudgeted amount would be twenty-five, four oh eight. Is what would be necessary for the incoming position. If theoretically, the, the salary was at what Dawn's was when he left. Follow that?
Think so.
Okay. And the reason why you don't subtract the whole sixty-seven hundred is because we've got the three-month and the four-month over here on the left.
Right.
That was already part, that was our, that we've taken out.
Right, yeah.
So twenty-five, four oh eight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. The unfunded liability. Which is what, uh, is necessary to make Dawn whole is, um. The thirty-two six. Okay?
Okay.
So at the end of the day, we have, uh, the unfunded liability into the reserve account. That started with the sixty thousand dollars from the years past in that unfunded liability, uh, account.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which is where the money for the new person is going to come from. Twenty-five, four oh eight. Leaves us with a balance of thirty-four, five ninety-one at the end of the year. We will owe Dawn the thirty-two six.
Mm-hmm.
If we decided to use all of that unfunded liability. To make him whole at the end of the year, which I think that was decided that we weren't going to do. But I, I mean, that's what we need to talk about. It leaves us with nineteen ninety, forty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
From that unfun- unfunded liability account. Now, that doesn't include the stipend that was for me.
Right.
Of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two. No. Uh, so that, that, let's say, uh, that's four thousand dollars by the time we get to where we're going. So we're basically minus, um.
About two thousand.
Twenty-one hundred bucks, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-one hundred and ten bucks, or twenty-one hundred, two thousand, uh.
Yeah. Not, not to.
That cuts us pretty, pretty close though.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I think it was discussed, and, and I don't know if that's an executive session issue. What was discussed with Dawn in carrying over to next year.
I have no knowledge of that, that was before I came on board.
Because his contract, he's, he's here till the thirty-first.
Right.
So at the very least, the vacation time that he has accrued to the thirty-first. Basically wouldn't get paid until the beginning of the following, of next year anyway.
Right, right.
So that basically is what that thirty-two six is. That's not his salary. That's, that's the, the benefit package that.
Yeah, right.
Carries over.
Yeah.
So if that carries over into the next year, um, I mean, we can budget for that.
Right.
In the beginning of the next year.
Right.
Which I, I wanna say that, that was kind of what an agreement was.
You weren't there either?
I don't recall.
I don't recall. I know that was, he mentioned that to me, that it'd be.
Yeah.
And, and that's how and when it would, would be paid anyway.
Right.
Into the next year.
That's no issue.
Yeah.
So. There really isn't that big of a deficit there, if that's the way it's wanting to work. Cause we can take care of that with that sixty thousand. The only thing is that minus about two thousand dollars.
Yeah, minus about two thousand dollars, but.
But that doesn't give us any overlay.
That doesn't give us any, any, it doesn't give us any room here as far as.
Negotiation. Negotiation.
Negotiation.
That's right.
Because one of the two candidates is not in the region. And may well, um.
Require relocation.
Expect to be given something for relocation as part of the negotiation.
So, I, I, I didn't, at least this gives us a basis, a base, so we're not looking at overlaying fifty thousand dollars to compensate for the lack of, of. Manager for.
Right.
Four months that we have to compensate them.
Right.
Um. So, that, knowing this, now moving forward, the tables that we've, we've got here that are highlighted, um, go from a, a minimum of.
Well, the first one is, uh, you're in the, in the hole, so that doesn't.
Yeah, that's right. So, that one doesn't work.
First one doesn't work at all.
So, the next one is a one point eight six mil increase.
And it gives you twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars of overlay, now you have to remember that we do need to have some overlay available. Because if we mistaxed someone.
Right.
We have to give him a, a rebate.
Second, second bill.
We have this, we have to have the money to give it back.
Right.
You know, if we buy, made a mistake somehow and, you know, overtaxed someone and they come to us and they say, oh no, my house isn't that big or whatever.
Yep.
And we say, yeah, you're right, we overtaxed you.
Right.
So, we need to have some money to, for that.
Yep.
Um, the other thing to remember is that. The money that you collect in overlay is not automatically spent and at the end of the year, it carries forward to the following year against your tax commitment.
Right.
For the next year.
So, whatever you have that's left over.
So, whatever you have left over that you didn't spend because you didn't need to abate it, for instance.
Bonus for the following year.
It, it goes to, decrease next year's tax commitment.
What did we have for an overlay last year?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five last year, thirty-five the year before, uh, in two thousand fifteen was like eighty-five. So, there, there may have been some other issues that.
Well, sometimes, sometimes if you anticipate that you're gonna have a big hit. Doing a little bit more overlay on the one year makes it go a little bit smoother.
Right.
So, when, like, if you know, for instance, next year, you're gonna have to raise two hundred thousand dollars more money, which is a mil, right? Well, we might say, well, if we raised three-fourths or half of that, half of this year and half of it next year, people are not getting whacked so hard. So, you know, that's one way of looking at it. You don't wanna necessarily collect money you don't need, but.
But you're on, we're on year ten of needing a ten-year revaluation, too, right?
Yeah.
So, the, the highest, the worst-case scenario was a two-point-two-one mil, which on the last page brings us to a hundred and six overlay. And if we work backwards, the one ninety-six gives us forty-five four eighty-three. And the s- flat two mil gives us fifty-five one seventy-nine. So, worst-case scenario, uh. Total mil rate would go from, well, we're not, we can't have the worst. Uh, twenty-twenty-five to, and we probably don't need to go to the last one. Twenty-sixty.
I don't know if that could be answered here right now, but, um. Tom, you said last year, you had an overlay about thirty-five thousand? How much of that was, ended up being used?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Um, I can find out, but for two years in a row, there was a thirty-five overlay, so.
Right, right.
I assumed that it was necessary to have that there.
Yep.
Cause there was an anticipated, uh, um, probably, uh, an abatement or.
That's a good point, because we didn't use, you know, if we went at thirty-five and we didn't use ten.
Right, yeah.
I mean.
But you never, that you never.
We have a different situation this year.
Don't really.
Yeah.
Yeah, lifetime, still now.
And personally, I, I think that that unfunded liability, that sixty thousand dollars that is there for a reason, um. That we're in right now, is kind of bailing us out a little bit. And there should be some type of appropriation to maintain that unfunded liability insurance in the case that. One of other, other employees goes and we need to, you know, pay that, that, that amount. You know, we have a couple of people that are retirement eligible.
Right, right, right.
That are in similar situation, not quite as, as, as high financially, but they're in a similar situation.
Yeah.
So, I guess my recommendation would be to, to keep some type of, not, not expend that whole sixty. And, and use some of that overlay for. What we decided to have the overlay for.
Right, yeah.
Can you tell them from there?
You can tell from how much is transferred.
The overlay doesn't sit in its own patch, the overlay gets life as a part.
Generally, yeah, yeah.
When I first came in here, it was twenty-five thirty-five, twenty-five one fifty, we slowly worked that out.
Yeah.
The overlay?
Yeah.
Really?
I don't know why, right?
Yeah.
I didn't understand before this year, it's to give you no.
Keep you no regular.
Yep.
And the max that they contain is what, two fifty dollars?
Um, the maximum is, uh, two twenty-one.
Two twenty-one.
Which would provide for an overlay of a hundred and six thousand.
Yeah.
No, no, I mean the maximum overlay that you can have.
Well, it's determined you can only, the overlay.
It's built into your.
It's built into your calculation, but you can only have your tax rate at a certain amount based on your valuation.
Two twenty, and, and for this is.
Yeah.
Two twenty-one, which would project an overlay of a hundred and six.
A hundred and six overlay is about equivalent to half a mil's.
Half a mil.
Half a mil's, um.
That's right, so.
You know, cause we, we, we're about two-thirty there, so for one mil.
That's right.
Two twenty-five or something, so a hundred and six is equal to half a mil, so, but.
So, i- if you were one point seven seven, you're basically breaking even with no overlay. And that extra, what you say, um. Point five brings us to the maximum of two twenty-one.
You ever once cry or make this thing?
About how much of it was, was used? That was the overlay, so it, in the face of. So, they didn't use any of it. Last year, it looks like none of it was used, answer your question.
Yeah, I do.
So, it means that everything fell well within budget and there was no unnecessary, unnecessary or unwanted or popped-up expenditures.
Well.
Or abatements.
No abatements, it's the only, the only place that you're gonna take money from there.
The overlay.
From the overlay.
Funding of a big.
Is to fund abatements. Because any expenditure of that overlay.
Yep.
You have, you have to have, um, a town meeting to approve it.
Yeah, correct.
Except if you had to, you could overspend in your, uh.
General assistance.
Charity, general assistance and public works.
Public works.
So, if, you know, that would be places where you wouldn't have to go to town meeting, you'd, you'd have the money. You'd have to have it appropriated the following year, you don't, but you'd already have the money.
Right.
Okay.
What's that?
How much is in the general fund?
Oh, uh.
From the overlay? For that?
It was thirty-five, thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five, and, and there were. There were abatements of thirty.
No, the zero's out every year. The zero's out every year.
Yeah.
Right. And there were abatements of thirty, thirty-nine hundred bucks.
Right. Right.
So, we, yeah, the way I look at it, our predicament here is, I mean, uh, I wanna see the mil rate too high, obviously.
Well, you're looking at a difference of, uh, point from the lowest case scenario, which I.
I already x-ed out the first page, cause we can't.
Right.
The negative over there, so.
Right.
So, you're looking at, uh, fourteen cents or fourteen dollars a thousand. From the, from the first.
Yeah.
Case scenario at twenty-one thousand.
Yep.
To the two mil at fifty-five thousand. You're looking at four, fourteen cents.
Yeah.
Because that's been one, I've had a lot of people come up to me. Asking what the mil rate's gonna go up and that's been a big concern of.
Yeah.
Well, one point eight six, people are gonna look at it as two.
Yeah.
It's two.
That's right, that's the way I see it, I mean, you might as well just bite the bullet and make it two and.
Make it two and it's even.
Have you taken into account the school budget, what's, what's?
Well, that's all.
Yeah.
It's included in here.
It's in here, yeah.
There's one thing you gotta take into account, special accounting.
What's that?
It's possible that the funds might not, might not be approved.
That's right.
That is a possibility.
So.
Yeah.
Then there's no overlay. And the mil rate is still one point eight. So, there's a difference of, uh, twenty cents with no overlay. Or twenty dollars a thousand. Or, uh. To have no, actually, i- it's, you're, you're indebted on the one point seven seven, so let's say at, at the one point, let's say one point eight six.
Yeah.
Which is the lowest here.
Yeah.
And that's probably what happened last year, how you, you got to the thirty-five was, it was a rounded off number.
Yeah.
Made that, that point zero.
I think we, we had asked Dawn to go back and to get it to an even number.
Even numbers.
So, like I said, from, from the two mil to the one point eight six, you're talking fourteen cents.
I mean, I think, I, I think really, you've gotta be either at one ninety-six or two. I think because of the issues we have with, you know, with the town manager business.
Yep.
I'd rather have a little bit, I'd rather have a little bit more than historical last few years, so. And I don't know that anybody's gonna, I mean, if, if you increase it one ninety-six versus two, I don't think anybody's gonna be saying, oh. You know, it's such a big jump.
Four cents on a thousand, or four dollars on a thousand. Forty, forty dollars on a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Forty dollars.
Yeah, between one ninety-six and two.
Yep.
But, you know, we give, you know, we gives you enough overlay.
Yes.
For the exceptional circumstances.
Right.
Plus you have what's been more than adequate previous several years.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Home, home state exemption, it's up a little bit.
What's that?
Home state exemption, wow.
Yes.
So, the, the tax bill would go up, Tom, forty dollars for every hundred thousand.
Well, the difference between, the difference between one ninety-six and two mils.
Okay, at two mils.
At, so two mils, uh, well, two mils, your, your tax bill's gonna go up, uh, two hundred, uh.
Two hundred dollars per hundred thousand.
Per hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So, but the difference between the one ninety-six and the two is forty dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Per hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Regardless of what compensation you have, whether it's one point eight or one point two, your compensation's gonna be the same pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
It's, it's, it's quite an increase regardless of what.
Well, we're, we're in a, a different predicament than what we were last year.
Yeah, yeah.
My goodness.
And, uh.
I mean. I don't wanna see it over two, but I think the two in this case, because of our situation, is what will be adequate moving forward.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, like I said, it doesn't mean that that money gets spent.
Right.
It has to be appropriated, so. So, if we collect it and we, we don't spend it, it goes to next year's taxes.
Goes to next year's taxes.
It'll go towards next year.
It goes to offsetting next year's tax, uh, commitment, so.
Once again, you're looking at point, point three next year reduction, if it's still there.
Hmm.
If it's not used.
Right. Yeah. So. I'd entertain a motion. To set the mil rate for next year's taxes at two mils above.
Which is, um. Twenty thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept, uh, or to increase our mil rate to mil with an overlay of fifty-five thousand.
Motion.
Yeah, just with the circumstances that we have fixing this, we need.
Motion by Scott, second Corey, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Before we go into executive session, is there any other points that anybody wanted to bring up tonight? We're good?
When are we gonna find out about town manager?
We'll find out when we have one.
How's the process coming, can we get an update on that, or?
Outstanding. We interviewed, uh, a group of candidates last week.
Yeah.
And narrowed the group down to two finalists and we're hoping to, uh, meet those two finalists. Uh, again, with, uh, department heads and community in the next several weeks, depending on everybody's schedules. Um, so that hopefully by middle of August, we can look to offer the person a position.
That is my stall conference, so there's no, no leaking names or nothing.
Uh, not by me.
I think by next week, uh, obviously, when we, when we, when we set up, uh, the meeting with the department heads. And, and with some local townspeople, uh, business people, uh, some of the employers in town that, uh, to have some, some input on, uh. How the process has gone to meet these folks, then I think that will be the day that, uh, I think we can announce that. Up until now, you know, the, these people have asked that it remain in confidence because they did have to notify their employers, uh. That they were in a competition for, for this job, so I think by, by the end of this week, I would be comfortable in even doing that. So, probably by Friday, I mean, that's part of the discussions we'll have and I'll bring the guys here up to date on where we're at with, uh. The timing on, on those meetings and, uh. Maybe as early as the next couple of days.
So, you guys kept the parking lot full.
What's that?
They kept the parking lot full for a while, so they were busy.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we had, we had good candidates and I. No, we had, we had good candidates, and I think we've got two very good, um, you know, semi-finalists, I would say. They bring different strengths, and, uh, so, we're looking forward to see, see how that works out. Okay, hearing no further discussions, I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session.
I'll make a motion to, uh, enter into executive session.